Welcome to the January 24th Committee of the Whole. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Fiore.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Rotundo is absent, Counselor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Council President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorm is present. There's one item on tonight's agenda, communication from the mayor relative to the Revere High School building project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to first recognize Counsel, former Counselor Anthony Zambudo in the audience today. Thank you for coming. Counselor Zambudo, for a person who served 20 years, Counselor Zambudo is well deserved. Before we start, I would also like to set some rules in place for this Committee of the Whole and how we're going to proceed. What I'd like to do is first start off and give Mr. Dakin and his team the opportunity to give us a quick overview and what has been updated up to this point, you know, regarding the decisions on the Building Committee, also on the School Committee, has made a decision. I'm then going to open it up to the city councilors and then finally open it up to the public. So, if you may, Mr. Dakin, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Counselor Visconti, Brian Dakin, 1 High Street. As noted at the previous meeting, I work for Left Field, the Onus Project Manager for the high school feasibility study, and I wanted to just give some quick verbal update of the progress that we've made and highlight a few key points about why the recommendation was made to go with the Wonderland site and to lay out some steps moving forward. So first, January 13th, the Building Committee unanimously recommended the Wonderland site as the preferred option. January 18th, School Committee did as well. And through those meetings and hearing some councilors at the last meeting, I just wanted to highlight some items related to really three main points. One of the main point is why the Building and School Committee seem to express this preference. That's me communicating what I heard from them. It's not me coming up with it on my own. And then talk a little bit about the Wonderland acquisition value and process, and finally just highlight a couple of deadlines for the feasibility study. So first, related to why the committees expressed the preference for Wonderland, really two main and overriding reasons. One is the idea of construction down at Wonderland has significantly less impact to the ongoing operation of the school and the delivery of education, and it was also perceived, I think personally accurately, as having a good deal of less impact to the neighborhood, simply because there are less impacted abutters down at the Wonderland site. Secondly, and perhaps more importantly, the Wonderland decision, according to these committees, allowed the city to control current and future enrollment increases system-wide throughout the school system, essentially allowing the city to, I think, a little bit more actively control your own destiny in terms of keeping up with enrollment increases. That really hinges on the concept of if Wonderland were the preferred option, the existing site could be maintained for a potential future reuse as a middle school. That middle school could alleviate magnet middle, take all the middle schools into one building, and then repurpose existing middles to keep up with elementary enrollment. That was sort of the main pieces to it, and I think that leads into Wonderland land acquisition a little bit in that the view of the Building Committee, understanding that they're working on a high school feasibility study right now, is that ultimately, if there is not a spot maintained for the middle school, there will have to be what is potentially a painful land acquisition in the future to make way for a middle school. None of the existing sites at initial read would suit themselves to a pretty large magnet middle school, so it basically allows the city to master plan a little more actively for the enrollment that has been occurring and will occur over the coming decades with new units opening. So regarding Wonderland acquisition specifically, I wanted to just take out the land acquisition for one sec, and a point that was interesting to some of the other committees was, you remove land acquisition, the Wonderland option, according to our research, is looking $6 to $7 million less than building on the existing site. And I wanted to stress why that's mainly driven by some of the underground issues we know of at the existing site, the culvert. So, in the grand scheme of things, we're talking $200, $300 million here, $6, $7 million difference, pretty close, but the main driver is obviously land acquisition. If you add that into the equation, the Wonderland proposal comes out to a higher ultimate value. We have an appraisal that was done on all of the Wonderland parcels by Hunneman and Appraisal Consulting Services, and ultimately, if this is the direction we're going to go, we need another appraisal, a second appraisal to put on top of that. The existing appraisal starts the value of the existing site just below $30 million, and depending on a number of factors, the appraisal identifies that that number could go higher, depending on what we're allowed to be developed there. So, we took that information, and for the entire site, we have $30 million plugged in the budget right now. For the partial site that we talked about, $23 million. Everything we heard from the other boards was sort of a desire to look at the site as a whole, so if that's the way you want to view it, $30 million is the plug we have. However, as I noted, moving forward, if this is the way all these committees want to go, we will have to commission a second appraisal, and after the decisions where we're asking to get these committees in alignment, we will ask through the mayor's office that the city begin negotiations with the owner of that parcel. The idea is that when the project comes back after schematic design, we're looking to get into schematic design right now. It'll take through the summer and into the fall to complete schematic design on the preferred option. We think that $30 million budget number could come back as a different number, based on having two appraisals and based on going through some negotiation with the owners. In the event that some agreement isn't reached, we will still need to carry basically a plug based on the appraisals that then could carry into the eminent domain, the follow-up of the eminent domain process. We would be looking for the city to begin potential eminent domain filings in January of next year after full approval of the schematic design, and that allows us to maintain all the schedules that we've put in front of you. Finally, just a quick highlight of the feasibility study deadlines. We're looking, the reason that we're here tonight and we wanted to come into this council was we wanted to really vet whether all of the three committees involved with this project are in alignment with the decision. If we are, we're immediately going to be moving forward with the second appraisal and requesting that the mayor's office begin that formal outreach to the landowners, as I noted before. The main deadline we're working with here is a March 3rd deadline to get the preferred schematic report to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That is a deadline that we have to meet. The report that constitutes the PSR, as we call it, is a probably, you know, 1,000, 1,200-page document that's both a history of what's been studied and mainly a summary of why these various committees chose the preferred option. So, we need next month effectively to gather up all the information, gather up everything that's been presented, formatted into a report that's explaining to the state why Revere chose what they chose. So, to keep that schedule, we're looking for a decision tonight or a ratification of the Building Committee and the School Committee's recommendation, and it would allow us to hold that March 3rd submission to the state. If somehow we weren't able to come to a consensus before, I'm going to call it tonight or very early in February, we will have to request an extension of the feasibility study from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And I think more importantly, the way the schedules that we put in front of you are designed, if we were to potentially lose a couple of months here and miss that deadline, keep in mind the School Building Authority functions and two-month deadlines. If you miss one deadline, can't get back in line for another two months. The construction schedules are likely to be pushed back. So, if we can't get consensus on the preferred option, if we can't make the March 3rd date, then I think the construction schedules, which all currently show a summer 2026 occupancy, are likely to move to a January, mid-year move, 2027 occupancy. So, that was the summary I wanted to give you folks now, and I'll step back and see if the council has questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dakin. What I'd like to do is, so we can be fair, let's go in alphabetical order and start off with Counselor Cogliandro, if you have any questions, and we can go forward all the way through. Thank you. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, my big concern is the cost of the land acquisition, and I think that's a lot of people's concerns. You said $30 million. I find that it might be a lot more than that. If that is the case, are we still moving forward, and how will that impact the taxpayers?
In our discussions we've had with the city, there's an understanding that that's really a starting point value, is having one appraisal, and even within that one appraisal, there's various ways to look at the value of that site. But at least through the project team, we've heard that the city is committed to that number growing. I think that number will only be real in the fall if a negotiated purchase is able to be settled effectively during the summer. If not, the eminent domain process will be based on the two appraisals. So, if both appraisals come back and put the site somewhere in that $30 million range, that's going to be the value that's used to issue a pro tanto payment, switch the deed over. The owners of the site then have what effectively amounts to a few years where they could go to court, go to arbitration to get more money, but the decision can never go backwards. So, from what I understand, there's a commitment from the city that if that value increases, we can stick with it.
Thank you.
Counselor Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, just to follow up on the questions, my understan-- who did the evaluation, actually?
A company called Hunneman out of Boston.
Okay. And it's my understanding that, I think the Showcase Cinemas went in the area, $70 something million, rented two recently, well, recently, but $22 million, so I'm concerned about that figure as well. And that's all I have at this time, but is to say that the city's committed, we are the city. So, I need to go through here first. All right? Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Dakin, for the presentation. I'll just say a few things. One is, I think every one of us are going to probably say that, have that same concern with the potential assessment or the, what the value of the property is in what we, if we're going to ultimately understand this site is the one to be, what we're willing to go with. Obviously, just for everyone's identification, I'm on the site, I'm on the Building Committee, so I'm on the School Building Committee, so I've been talking about this for over a year and a half with yourself and others, as well as yourself, Mr. President. And ultimately, I was on the Building Committee that voted favorably, unanimously, for this project site plan to be chosen at Wonderland. Early on in the stages, a year ago, I really didn't think it was going to be feasible. Over time, I took the pros and cons, and due to some of the assessments that we had been brought forth, I definitely came on to the other side. And I just want to, you know, clarify my reasonings and where I would be in support, obviously, given we can get a little bit more of a firm on that number. It was the pros and cons, the simple cons, and I'll go with the cons first, where accessibility is a little different, you know, it's a little difficult and it is in a tougher area, but current site isn't all that much easier. If you see the students leaving the current school right now, they cross a highway. So, current site really isn't all that great either. And the only other con was the cost of the initial, the initial cost of the land where that's not recoupable via the building process. But the pros were site control, future site control for growth of the city. How do we estimate and how do we maintain able, the ability to meet the demands of the growth of our city 10 years from now? So, that was a big one. No disruption in the current learning environment, that was a huge concern for all the teachers and the faculty and the people that were on the Building Committee, that are still on the Building Committee, the six-year disruption of the current site. It's a clean canvas. You don't have to change around the culvert that goes through the current school. And lesser restrictions. You know, I think that as you're building the school, you know, as you know, when you're working on a current site and you're working around all the things that go around, that there's going to be a lot of restrictions. Being in the world that I've been through building processes, it's going to add more complications, it's going to add more time to the project, and it's going to probably add more costs to the project and difficulty. So, again, I ended up becoming in favor of the Wonderland site with the understanding that we will be able to come into an area where we're all comfortable in the land acquisition. And one other thing I wanted to clarify, and again, I was in the same ilk, is it a $100 million project? I mean, a site? Is it a $20 million site? What is it? And we do have to remember, when it comes to the site, it's based on what the site can be used for, and I've been on the council for six years. The only things that people have come to me on that site, business people, people that have hundreds of million, billions of dollar companies, the only people that have come in front of me to pick up that site, the only people that come to me have been people that want to do massive residential development. So, again, the other pro is you actually take that off the massive residential development list of what can happen in the city, and that's the only people that value that property at $100 million. That's, or potentially an Amazon site that's going to have 1,000 cars there and be another distribution site, which, again, they're good for our city. We have two of them. We do not need a third, at least I don't think so right now. Don't make me eat my words later on, but the only people that have come to me for a big price tag on that site have been massive, I'm not talking 200 units, massive residential developments and a potential of an Amazon. No one's, I was actually told by retail developers, it's a terrible retail site. Retail developers do not want to go in there. You will not see Market Streets at Wonderland Marketplace or Wonderland Dog Track. You will not see that. You will not see Assembly Row at Wonderland. Terrible retail site, is what I was told by experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Dakin, for your presentation. My biggest concern is it's not a pedestrian-friendly area. Counselor Novoselfsky and I have been working diligently throughout the years, throughout the last six years, to get added crosswalks in there. It doesn't matter where the crosswalks are, the kids walk in between the cars, the shortest way for them to go into Shirley Ave. So, that's my biggest fear, is if they're going back to, you know, the old high school and they're crossing in between cars and they're not obeying the crosswalks, I just think that if we're going to put it there, it really, really needs to be pedestrian-friendly, and we should have all kinds of studies there to make sure the kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito.
Thank you. So, I'm not here to be an obstructionist, but I do have reservations about the current building the high school at the former Wonderland site. So, one is safety concerns. As far as walkability, I grew up in that neighborhood, and that was the forbidden area. You don't walk at that rotary, especially during rush hour, morning traffic, and especially during the winter when there's snow, because the sidewalks are never paved. So, my, the safety concerns I have are, the high school is walking from Bell Circle or wherever they're coming from, that whole stretch of land into Wonderland, as far as coming from the other side of the city, coming down Revere Street and coming down North Shore Road into the high school. Also, what plays into the safety concern is the high volume of traffic. We're not talking about 25,000 vehicles that travel through that road every day. We're talking about 100,000 vehicles. In addition to the volume of traffic that currently travels to and from that location, adding more traffic is going to be a nuisance. It doesn't see, and I know it's going to bite us all in the butt years later, because everyone's going to complain about it. So, that's my concern as far as safety concerns, in the well-being of the students. Let's see what else I have. As far as land acquisition, I think, I believe the same thing. So, we have Showcase Cinemas that was, that is 13.8 acres. It sold for $50 million. You have the parcel of land that used to be building 19, right near the Walmart on the Linway, that is 6.8 acres, that sold for, that just sold for $20 million. And currently, you have Wonderland that's 28 acres. I don't, I think to budget for $30 million and to even, when including a budget, why put what the minimum that you think it's going to be? Why not put an average? Why the minimum amount of 30? If you think it could be 100 million, why not put the mid-level price point? That's my concern. As far as the cost of the project, we have, we're taking a piece, a parcel of land that off the tax roll that is $500,000 a year. The CDP is $500,000 a year. That's not counting land value. There is no land on there. So, if someone does build on that property eventually, we'll be getting assessed taxes on that land and the building. So, I'm concerned about not receiving that revenue. Also, if you take that $500,000, we're going to be taking, so, over 30 years, in 30 years, if you look at that parcel of land, it's going to be, it's going to be worth a fortune. And I look at the expenses, and I, I'm trying to balance it out. I look at the expense of this project and I look at $400 million to design the school. Sure, we're going to get reimbursed for MS, by MSBA, so maybe like, what's the, what's the amount that we're looking to spend?
Most of the MSBA grants might account for, call it about 150 million.
So, 150 million. We have an unknown variable of land acquisition. In addition of this, we're talking about, you know, the current high school, okay? The current high school would have to be renovated if we do put a middle school, elementary school in there. But if we renovate that building, MSBA is not going to kick in and reimburse us for that. So, that's going to be down the road, that's going to be more money, and at the end of the day, it's going to be a, the taxpayers have to foot the bill. So, once again, those are my reservations. At the end of the day, I'm not looking to be an obstructionist, once again, the school billing board voted in favor of it, the school committee voted in favor of it, and I'd be remiss if I didn't put my reservations out there, but at the same time, we do need a high school. I campaigned on the fact that I'm pro-education, and I know we need a new high school, and I understand the current high school site would be desirable for a middle school. So, with that said, thank you for all the work you've done, your presentation, the feedback you've given us, and that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Ms. President. Mr. Dakin, again, thank you. Clarification, how many acres are there at Wonderland, exactly?
I think it's, it's between 33 and 34, 33, 4, 6.
Yeah. I thought it was around 35. Thank you.
33, 33.45.
Okay. Now, from what I understand, out of that 35 or 33, 34, whatever it may be, about six or seven acres are not usable because of flood zone or AC, AC, ECAC issues, so that's not usable property for construction. So, now you're reducing it down to about 27 acres that are left. Now, my thought process says that if we're going to, and I think I said this last time too, that the school is only going to take up anywhere between 12 and 14 acres itself, because I'm not for the recreation part, 100% of it. You know, if we wanted to put some tennis courts at this point, maybe squeeze it, squeeze that in. So, now you're talking maybe 15 acres. Now, the rest of the land, if we take it over, we can RFP it after the school's built and sell the land for what we want on it, not what a developer wants on it. So, if we wanted to put some housing, affordable maybe, or some other biotech buildings that may be there, that could fit in there, fine. But I know tonight, we're only talking about whether or not we want to be at the Wonderland site, which I am basically for. Now, you mentioned that the second appraisal could be more. What's your thoughts on it, other than 30 million? Because I'm getting feedback that it could be maybe five times that. And I do understand that there may be someone looking at the site now to purchase, so just to further.
Sure. A lot of the discussions we had with Hunneman, the appraiser, sort of acknowledged, and I think it's something I might have mentioned to this committee, could have been one of the other ones though, but we're really looking at, as Counsel LeKief said, what could be built down there, what's likely to be built down there. The $30 million value is effectively based on what Counsel LeKief was mentioning, residential-centric development, which there is a market for out there. The more commercial you look for on that site as a percentage of what, you know, is it 80% residential, 20% commercial, the more you tip that towards commercial, the value of the site on paper goes up. So, a lot of the discussion about the appraisal is what could be built down there, and that's one of the things that's keeping the starting point at 30. The second appraisal is something that I think opens up a debate between the two, and coupled with negotiations with the owners of that site, we'll know if, if an agreement can be reached or if this is going to be something that's eminent domain and ultimately decided in arbitration via land court.
Cool. To continue, you know, and I understand that safety of the kids is a number-one priority. Now, we know it's going to be, there's going to be a problem at Wonderland, but thinking about the way it's built, there are already pedestrian lights at a crosswalk across from Wonderland Plaza, which, if I remember correctly on the plan, that was probably one of the exit points to come out of the property.
Correct.
So, the kids would have a place to cross there with pedestrian buttons and a crosswalk to cross over to the other side of the street, and actually, the kids who Shirley Ave would go behind, use the pathway up Wall that Ave, behind the 99 and Planet Fitness. So, I think it would be less, somewhat less problems there for that site. If we had it at the current site, the kids are still going to be doing the same thing they're doing now, and we're going to have the problem no matter what, whether, so that's my thought there. So, and the school hour issue down at the Wonderland site, that's a school. So, and the school hour issue down at the Wonderland site, that's a school, traffic pot, that is mainly going to be early in the morning or middle after, middle to late afternoon. During the day, you're still going to get the same traffic. You know, you're going to get the traffic in the morning, people coming from Peabody, Lynn, Salem, Sargus, coming down North Shore Road. No matter what you do, that's not our city traffic doing it. It's out-of-town traffic. It's commuter traffic. And, you know, are we concerned about the number of what it's going to cost for the site? Yeah, but I think we can handle it. You know, we're doing very well in the city of Revere. And it's a long-term thing. I know we'd have to put some money away for the middle, new middle school. I'm for that. You know, I, I think that the current site we have right now could be a great middle school. And again, I probably won't be around by that time. But I think it's a good place to go. We don't have the land in this city of Revere to build another middle school, bottom line. Mr. President, thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel. Let's hope that you are around. Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. President, through you to Brian, I do have some prepared questions that I, you know, kind of thought of before, but as we have this discussion about the amount for the land acquisition, I would say obviously that I too am very concerned. And I would ask, is there a way that we as a council could, if we were to vote on the Wonderland site tonight, could we attach language with regard to a maximum that we would be comfortable with for acquiring the land? You know, is that possible? Through you, I guess, to the clerk.
I would have, I'm sorry, I would have to defer to legal counsel. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, we can defer that to legal counsel. Brian, you, you wouldn't know, just, just dealing with the MSBA, would you have any answer or any input on that?
Yeah, simply from a Massachusetts School Building Authority and just the high school, I'm not questioning the, the authority of the council to do that, but the School Building Authority really wants us to follow a path. And there's points along that path when you cannot go backwards. So, the select, the, the point that we're at right now is to pick the option, pick the site. There's no going back after that. So, if there is a number that's attached to it and that number at some point gets exceeded, I think again, we'd have to look with legal counsel to enlighten us on this, but I would think that means the project could not proceed. Perhaps that's not what it means, but taken at face value, I think if there's a limit, there's a limit. And if we were to find that out, I think you would have basically lost any progress in the feasibility study. You'd have to go reapply for a new project from the MSBA and do the feasibility study again. So, I, I think that's one of those items that could become an issue.
Mr. President.
Counsel Kief.
Thank you. And just to, I guess in layman's terms, Mr. Dakin, and to use, Mr. Serino, correct me if I'm wrong, this is to select the site. So, if we approve the site via vote, then the site is selected. But further down the road, we have, they still have to come in front of us for the budget. So, if we, we approve the site, but we, then we say it's too much, then we, then we shoot it down there. Yes, there will be some time lost, absolutely. That's, that's the risk we'd be taking. There could be some time lost. But you could still deny the site if it, if it came back, it's $200 million or something, something completely absurd, and we would vote, we would, correct me if I'm, vote against it on, on the funding of the, the site.
That's correct.
Through you, Mr. President. Also, I think whereas MSBA, where, where, they're not reimbursing us for the land acquisition, just the project itself.
Land acquisition isn't good, yes.
Correct.
Yes. If I can just interrupt for one moment and clarify something, once we're all in on this project, we're all in, okay? There's no turning back. And, and, and let's make that quite clear, that, you know, we, we approve this site and they go in front of the MSBA, and then we don't get funding for this site. What happens is we go back on that list, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Wait the next five years to try to get back on the list, okay? And then start all over. So, I like to think that that's not an option, okay? Once we have been on this list. So, let's make that quite clear to everyone that that's what we're voting on. You know, we want to stay on this list and we want to make sure that a high school gets built first and foremost. Where is the, the biggest question, but let's not forget the, the play here is to make sure that a Revere, New Revere High School gets built. With that being said, Counselor, oh, Serino, continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll defer to Fiori for one second. I think he had a, did he have a, oh, sorry. So, my, my other question, Brian, would be eventually, you know, there will be a deal on the land acquisition price. If that, if that deal doesn't come through and it does end up in court and then it has to go through the eminent domain process, would we be back where Counselor Kief was just saying, if the courts end up saying that we need to pay more for that land than we wanted to or agreed upon?
In the theoretical of it ended, ending up in land court or in arbitration, the city already owns the land. City already has the deed. City's already issued a payment based upon the appraisals. And the city would at that point be subject to, if a land court or arbitration yielded a new number, you already have the deed, there's already construction going on down there, you're committed, and, and would have to, would have to fund that.
Mr. President, if I might, those were, those were questions I thought of through the meeting, but I was just wondering through, I believe to Mr. Visque, Mr. Visque is in the audience, would we possibly be able to get a snapshot of what losing tax revenue from the Wonderland site would look like for city budgets down the line forecasting?
Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Richard Visque, CFO, 21 Broadway. That's a great question, Counselor. We did have three scenarios run with regard to the entire parcel development-wise. With 80% commercial development, 20% residential development, we imagine that the total value would be about 1.2 billion and that total tax revenue that could be generated would be about $21 million on the site. If you look at a 50-50 split residential and commercial, total valuation is about 1.3 million and estimated tax revenue was 19.2 million. And then we flipped it 80% residential, 20% commercial, the value, valuation is about 1.4 billion, which would realize a potential tax of $17 million. You know, because the commercial rate's a little higher than residential rate, the values may not be directly correlated to the actual revenue coming in. And just to finish the thought, if we left approximately eight to 10 acres available for development and use the other portion of that, we estimate that about half a billion dollars in value add about $5 million of taxes. So, you know, you got about a delta of $12 million in there, give or take, and it's just a matter of what portion of that land is used for a high school versus development and then the types of development that may go there. So, there's, you know, it's a, it's a hard question to answer per se, so we, we've done some, you know, high and lower middles, but certainly, you know, I think a delta of, somewhere in the, in the range of, you know, 12, 15 million could be reasonable with, you know, depending on the size of the development as such.
Thank you, Mr. Visque. And that's to say that, you know, assuming it eventually gets developed, and it's important to note that that site has sat vacant for 10 years and in some ways has been a blight to our community with some of the activities that have gone on there. So, I think this, you know, this could be a positive thing for, for the site. So, thank you, Mr. Visque. Mr. President, I do, if you don't mind the leeway.
Go right ahead.
I do have a couple more, one, not for you, Mr. Visque, sorry. One question for Dr. Kelly. And in talking with a couple of residents, you know, we, we discussed the central middle school, and one of my residents said, you know, if you build on the current site of the high school, but the new high school on the current site at Erecola Park, why can't you put a central middle school on, say, the Wayland School ballfields or repurpose the McKinley School? And I can understand why we can't, but I just, if you wouldn't mind explaining why something like that would not be feasible.
Sure. I'll start with the McKinley because I think that one's a little bit easier. That site simply isn't large enough for a central middle school. I think that probably every counselor here has either experienced in their own family or heard from constituents about the middle school lottery. And what drives that middle school lottery is the overcrowding that we already have at all of our middle schools. And one of the ideas behind having a central middle school is that it would eliminate that need. But it would also allow us to repurpose the existing middle schools into elementary. So, Wayland, instead of being the Wayland Elementary and the Susan B. Anthony Middle, that whole facility could be used for elementary school education if the middle school is removed to a central middle school. Same thing at Garfield. And we could really keep kids in their own neighborhood for elementary school without forcing them into classrooms like we have at the Paul Revere with over 30 students in them, simply because there's not another square inch of space in that building to put kids. So, it's a, it's a very longitudinal thought process about how all of this would work. And one of the things that I want to highlight is if we were to build on, say, the, the parks that are right now around the West Revere complex, those parklands need to be replaced by state law somewhere within the city limits. One of the things that we learned very carefully in this process of over two years trying to figure out where the high school could go is that Revere, for all of its wealth in so many areas, is not rich in land. And that's what one of the problems is. So, building another building on those parklands would be problematic because you'd have to find a place to put the parklands. And, you know, that's truthfully one of my biggest concerns as an educator around building on Erecola Park is the fact that it gives us no option to fix the schools at the elementary and middle level, like Ira was talking about. We would still have all of those educational problems. And I, you know, I really appreciate the council and all of the due diligence everybody has put into this, but know that if we don't come to consensus, the 30 million or 40 million or however many million extra for Wonderland is a heck of a lot less than 150 that the MSBA is offering us to help us with this project. And if we can't come to consensus, we're not talking about 30 million or 40 or 60, we're talking about 150, unless the city leaders want to not amplify education as one of their primary areas. And I know that's not the case for any of you. I know that you all value education. You've been tremendous partners to us for the whole time that I've been in this district and, and we appreciate that, but I just don't want to lose sight of that in this decision. It is definitely a very important decision. And did I say the McKinley site is too small? Okay, all right.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to tie it back, so the reason that I am supporting the Wonderland site or why I'm leaning towards supporting the Wonderland site, the main driving force behind that is the central middle school, you know? And I'm, when I was elected, I said I'm going to think five, 10, 15 years, not just the here and now of Revere. But my concern is, is in five years, God willing, if I'm still here on this council, I don't want to be bickering about a, you know, $200 million central middle school and where are we going to put that? Because the reality is, is that we do, we are going to need a central middle school. So, I think the Wonderland site kind of answers that, that question and really drives that, that point. So, thank you, Dr. Kelly, too.
Just to clarify one thing for Counsel Morabito, we could apply to the MSBA for a new core project after this one's completed to help us renovate the existing building for a new middle school. That, that we, we would have to get invited in again, and we know that can be a multi-year process, but that would still be on, on the option.
Thanks for that information. Counsel Silvestri.
Counsel Visconti, through you too, I believe, Brian. Counsel, I just want to go on record, as of tonight, if we vote on this and it, and it does go through, how do we put, I guess on paper, that it will be done 100% union-built and that Revere residents will be, will have a number of those jobs on site?
One of the tasks, tasks that we're going to pursue this summer regardless of the site is procuring a construction management at-risk firm. So, this is going to be a chapter 149A CMR project. Only the largest general contractors, or CMs as we call them, are going to be able to handle this project or even DCAM certified to do a project of this size, and all of them on various levels typically are signatory to, to many of the unions. So, I think that's a detail that we need the construction manager on board to help us out with, but, you know, point heard loud and clear, it's something that we hear a lot on these projects. And once we have that, the partner, the, the general contractor who's going to put the couple hundred million dollars of work in place, that's an item that we can work with them and work through the, the bidding process.
Very good point, Counsel Silvestri. I should have asked that question myself, but as someone who sponsored the Revere Residence Construction Ordinance a number of years ago, that's something I'd be very interested in, shame on me. Dr. Kelly, I think you realize you misspoke in suggesting that we don't value education. We have a fiscal responsibility here. The school building committee has no fiscal responsibility here, and the school committee has no fiscal responsibility. I have a number of things I'd like to say. I'm not through yet, so if you don't mind. I think you, you know what you said, and I think you realize.
Thank you.
And, and I am leaning, I have a couple of things, a couple of questions, not directly.
Well, I just want to clarify for you that that's not what I said. I said that I know that all of these counselors do care about education. I think you misheard me.
Oh, maybe I did.
Counsel Fiori, I understand you had your chance already.
Do I have a couple, a couple of things? With respect to eminent domain, having served as a clerk of court, Superior Court for a number of years, judges really don't look favorably on municipalities. So, I call your attention to the Commonwealth v. Worcester, and whereas they, it was a $20 million school, and at the end, you end up paying, because you ended up paying, they ended up paying 68 million. So, having said that, I am leaning towards the Wonderland site. We do value education. I went, maybe one of the few people here that went 12 years in Revere Public Schools and graduated from Revere High School. I'm not the sharpest light bulb, the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I got a pretty good education. So, as far as determining the highest and best use, at the end of the day, we're going to be paying it. And I don't have the chapter and section, but I would suggest people taking a look at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Fiori. Okay. Can I have the floor for a moment and ask a few questions if you, if I may? Huh? Is that okay? Thank you. Okay, so I got a couple of questions for a couple of different people. Let's start off with Mr. Dakin, if you don't mind. I want to first note that the Wonderland site or Erecola Park was neither my first choice, okay? Unfortunately, we are where we are, okay? And we, as a city council, as a city, have to make a decision on where this new high school goes. And let me say that it's not an easy decision to make for either the building committee, the school committee, nor us as a counselor, a council, but a decision has to be made. What I want to first say is regarding the middle school, can the existing high school be occupied as a central middle school without triggering the 180 or $200 million reno that might be required, okay? Is that something that's possible based on the existing site as is?
It's possible with certain parameters, and the most applicable parameter is that to make it a middle school, to convert it into a middle school, if you spend more than a third of the assessed value, assessed value's around 60 million, so let's call that 20 million, you have in fact tripped the trigger for a full code upgrade. And a full code upgrade of that building as is, not adding on to it, just, just upgrading everything from bathrooms to ramps to stairs to the envelope to getting hazardous materials out of there to more energy-efficient heating systems, that will get you right into that 180 to $200 million code renovation. So, you could get kids in there, you'd have to do it for a small amount of money. The thing to keep in mind is if you were to put kids in there right away without that reno, that building probably doesn't have another 20 years, 15, 20 years without some major renovation there. So, I think the reality is however that building is used at some point in the next 10 or 15 years, it's going to require that code upgrade that's immediately going to become, and today that's immediately going to become, in today's dollars, 180, 200 million dollar project.
Okay. Dr. Kelly, if I may. If, in fact, the kids could move into this building immediately, okay? Is there a game plan in place for our school district to, in fact, get them in there and make that a central middle school sooner than later? And, you know, one of my concerns with that is the building staying dormant and empty. And I don't think anybody wants that, that building to stay empty, because we know what could happen if that's the case. So what's the plan on the school department to make that transition? Because people, like you said, and I've seen the parents during the lottery process, I've seen it, how it affects some of the parents. And I think a central middle school is great. That's why I'm leaning towards Wonderland. But the other thing is, I don't want it just to be a thought, okay? How realistic is that, and how soon can that happen?
So it is definitely realistic. Our next steps, if the council were to vote for Wonderland tonight, I think that we need a minute to get into that process, get moving with the new high school building. Our next step would be talking to the School Committee and the City Council about what next steps are for a central middle school and how we want to start to begin that process. One of the things we would want to do rather quickly, even while the students are still at the existing high school, is start talking about redistricting. And where some of the Paul Revere district would move to the Beauchmont, for example, or to the Garfield, for example, and figuring out what new configurations for the streets would make sense so that we can start transitioning kids through. We would want to grandfather families who already have kids in a particular elementary school so that if they wanted to, their kids could finish through their elementary and not be switching from one school to another in second grade or third grade or something like that. So that's a multi-year process. But that would be the next step, is to think about redistricting our elementary schools so that when we come to a point, say, six years from now, the high schoolers are moved into a new building, the middle schoolers are moved to a central building, and for six years, we've been working on transitioning kids to their new elementary school. So all of that kind of culminates at one time.
Okay. So that's, like you said, that's going to be happening behind the scenes while the construction is in process.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, and you're looking for what, hopefully, a smooth transition into a central middle school?
That's right. And if we decided, as is, I say "we", if the City Council and the School Committee and the mayor decided that they wanted to do that massive renovation of the building, which to me would be a wonderful thing, then we would not move the kids in right away because it would be easier to get that construction done when the building's empty and then move them in. But I feel like these are conversations that we need to have ongoing once we get past this current hurdle.
Okay. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you. Dr. Kelly, one of the best experiences I had at the Revere Public Schools was when they transformed the old Garfield School into ninth grade. And everybody in the ninth grade from the city went to this building. We got to know everybody. So the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, we didn't have any, it was, there was no effect for us because we already know, we already knew the people that we were going to high school with. So it was wonderful. It really was wonderful. It was one of the best experiences that I had when I was going through junior high and elementary, high school at Revere.
Yeah, that's helpful. And I think that you probably know my predecessor, Paul Dakin. One of the reasons that we have citywide middle schools is so that kids will get to know each other when they're in middle school. Then they come to the high school, they're already friends. And we don't run into the, oh, you're from Beauchmont? I'm from North Revere. And those are the kinds of problems that a lot of high schools face when kids just come in not knowing each other from different parts of the city. And, you know, so that's actually a luxury that we'll continue to have if we have a central middle school, but they'll all be in one place instead of having to have the lottery.
Thank you, Counsel McKenna. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. I just want, I have one more question, and that's for Mr. Visca, if you don't mind. I guess the biggest question probably is on your shoulders, okay? And one of the, you know, many residents come to me, and, you know, I've talked to many residents. They're going, 250, 275 million dollars. How is the city going to pay for that? I defer to you, obviously, when it comes to that. I have the luxury of doing that. So that's a big question. Whether it's Wonderland or Aracola Park, I think it's something that we need to explain to our residents. You know, our seniors are concerned. Obviously, they don't have kids in the system. They're afraid of their taxes going up. And I'd like to at least give them some insight on what the game plan is from the city's point. Thank you.
No pressure.
None at all?
Great question. And I believe, simply put, what is going to make this project affordable is the new growth that will be realized at both the Wonderland site, whatever, partial, or however big that is. And more importantly, the site of Suffolk Downs, which is H-Y-M Development. They forecasted to ultimately have $40 million in new tax revenue coming in over a 20-year phased period. So working closely right now with the Assessing Department and the Planning Department to kind of get some idea, you know, if they flip-flop some of their development. A life science building is coming on sooner rather than later, which actually bears well to this project. But we certainly have to dovetailing all this new growth into planning for that debt payment that, you know, somewhere around 2029 fiscally, you're talking, at the numbers we're talking about now, at least $14 million worth of new debt on the books. I'm using a 4% interest rate. I mean, if we were bonded right now, we have some very favorable rates. But who knows where we're going to be in 2029? So, long story short, the new growth will carry this project. But as everybody's aware, at one point, we were talking about a $300 million project with, you know, maybe 70% reimbursement. Now we're upwards of 400 million and maybe a 40% reimbursement. So some of these numbers have been changing. I've been working diligently, just trying to gather all the information. And right about now is when I start the budget process, and the first thing I'm going to do is try to rejigger some of these numbers and build a forecast. I typically do a five-year forecast, but now I've got to prepare something that's more 20 years old to really see how these new growth dollars will dovetail into the timing of the construction of this high school. On top of that, with the new growth, we should realize some hotels are bringing in rooms tax, mail tax, motor vehicle excise tax, all those types of local receipts, building permits for these projects. All of these have to be looked at very carefully and forecasted out and really try to dovetail this in because we've committed to doing this project without a debt exclusion or an override vote. We don't want to do that. We don't believe, we need to do it. But you certainly got to look at all the options because the tax levy can only go so high. But, you know, when people say, how much are taxes going to go up? We tax the levy limit, so we can't go over that limit. So the taxes are going to be the taxes regardless, unless there's an override. Then we could talk about how much more the taxes will be. But the idea is this new growth will hopefully pay for the cost of this construction and/or the land acquisition cost. But there's so many big numbers being thrown around. It's just trying to get some semblance of what this looks like, what the time is going to be, and when all these revenues start coming in. We're actively working on it right now. But that's, I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. I'm sure you'll work diligently in trying to get those numbers as close as possible. Thank you. With no further questions from the council, what I'd like to do is open it up to the public. So Counselor Zambudo, welcome back.
Thank you. Tony Zambudo, 87 High Street. I'm here to try to put some facts on the table. Number one, I heard some good stuff from some of my friends and former colleagues. And the bottom line is, the City Council is the people responsible for the funding here. And I spent 22 years as a City Councilor protecting the taxpayers. That's what I'm here doing tonight. I had no intention of coming back this early to talk to my former colleagues and friends. I'm trying to prevent the city from making the most fiscally irresponsible mistake in the history of the city. It's not about the 25, 20, 50 million dollars in acquisition cost or the 250 or 275 million it's going to cost to build the school after the allotment from the small, the School Building Authority. It's about taking Wonderland off the tax rules. For example, Suffolk Downs is projected to pay $47 million a year in tax revenue when it's fully built out. That's the premier development the city will ever have. I don't think that's an overstatement. I don't think we'll ever get a better development than Suffolk Downs. So let's say that Wonderland is half of that. Just half. That's 23 and a half million dollars a year in lost revenue. Times 50 years is almost 1.2 billion dollars that the taxpayers are being asked to come up with because we're not going to get it from the piece of property that we're taking off the tax rules. Now, the Building Committee did their job. They selected what they thought was the best site. I may agree with that or disagree with it, but I don't think that's your job here. Your job is to protect the taxpayers. I ask you to vote against this location. Now, I'm for a new high school, and I know everybody up here is. But please don't go down this road. Please don't vote to take 1.2 billion over the 50 years off the tax rule. I ask you to vote no on the Wonderland site. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Mr. Zambudo. Any further? Name and...
Raffi Chico, 49 Washington Street. I am sorry to disagree with former Council President Tony Zambudo. We cannot assume a development is coming there that is going to be bringing us that tax revenue. What we can assume is our students and children of this community need great public education. This is the only land that is feasible so that it will not stop the current education, that will not cause disruption in the education that's going on right now. These students and families deserve state-of-the-art in the city of Revere. We've been waiting how many years this land has been dormant at Wonderland? The only people that are making money on that land for the past 10, 15 years is the owners in New York for renting their cars on that property that the city of Revere is not getting money. So do we sit here and wait for a pie in the sky that that land is going to get developed when we do not want to put a high school there and they make the profits? In the city of Revere, oh, we can say that a development is going to come there and possibly bring 22 million dollars a year to the city's taxpayers? Or do we move forward and approve this location? I say yes, we approve this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chico. Any further comment from the public? That being said, do I have a motion? Okay. That being said, well... Thank you, Mr. President. I just, can you give me a chance?
Mr. President, there was some, maybe some specific language that you might want to use.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Bear with me for a moment. There you go. Okay. That, okay, the verbiage will be that the following motion be reported out favorably to the City Council, that the City Council approve the Building Committee and School Committee's selection of the Wonderland site as a feasibility study preferred option for submission to the Mass School Building Authority and for further study during schematic design. Roll call the members.
Roll call the Committee of the Whole. On the motion, Counsel Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fiore.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rizzo is absent. Counsel Rotundo is absent. Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the motion has received a favorable recommendation and will be forwarded to the full City Council this evening.
Congratulations. That concludes our Committee of the Whole. Thank you. Recede five minutes.